Mr. Wagner is in Hereford. His grandfather died, so we extend our condolences to the family. Agenda item number three is approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number four is public comments and announcements.
Mr. Mayor, I was out at the flag retirement ceremony they're having for an Eagle Scout project, and I've talked to Dean McFadden, our fire chief. He asked me to report that we are under a burn ban, and as of presently fireworks are prohibited in Guyman. If we get X amount of rain, they take us out of the fire ban, that may change, but until further notice, we are prohibited to have fireworks. Now, the city will continue to have their public display, but there will be no more, no private fireworks this year.
All right. Any other public comments and announcements? I'll make one. I was honored this week, or it was, I was overjoyed to get to go. Number two grandson Grayson Wallace was inducted into the Jim Thorpe Sports Hall of Oklahoma Sports Hall of Fame in Oklahoma City Tuesday. It was as the outstanding male golfer in the state of Oklahoma this year. There are about 25 or six kids and some coaches, but a kid from each sport for the entire state, and it was an award that was based on scholarship activities and also their ability in that sport. So, quite a big deal, and we're pretty proud of him, and you know, it's been, I don't think Guyman's, I don't think they've ever reached this far west to do that. So, it was quite an honor for him and a joy for us. Any other public comments? Agenda item number five is presentation of the monthly activities and financial report by artist incubation.
That'll be you.
Yep. Well, now I know why Dean's not here since Chet had to make the announcement. I think you guys got the report that Marcia had emailed over, so I'll just kind of touch on some of the highlights on that. The financials, you've got that. Community partnerships, again, most of this stuff is self-explanatory, so I'm not even going to bother going through that. The events, we have the summer art camp that's coming up that's sponsored in part by the city of Guyman and the Oklahoma Arts Council. Right now, we've got about 22 students that are signed up for that, and we still have about two weeks to go for the registration, so the students are coming in on that one. Beer making, just the basics, that was a class that we had on Saturday. Jason Hitch, Larry Wertz, Judge Ryan Reddick, Eddie Van Dyke, they were all there giving us the basics on that. They taught the students all about the grains and the extracts, yeast, wort, specific gravity, all of that stuff. It was a good time, plus it gave us the opportunity to promote one of our artists, which is also our incubator client, so all of the students got an original hand-thrown art, a mug that they took home with them. Then, we also had a pastel workshop. One of the other things that we're really working on right now is the barn quilt workshop. That one we're doing in conjunction with OSU. This is a project that OSU has been doing. I know it's big in the northeast, barn quilts, but this is something that we're doing. It also supports the Texas County Fair. Their theme is "Start Your Tradition," and this is something that, you know, we're working with OSU, we're supporting the fair this year. Hopefully, the, most of the projects that we have in this workshop will also be exhibited at the county fair, as well as they'll be put out on their barns once they're completed, and we'll try to have a trail as well that we can promote. This is, it's a big deal for us because we're trying to come up with different projects within the gallery. This one is going to be our STEM project because of the geometry that is involved, because what it's doing basically is you're taking quilt block squares and then you're painting them, so you have to, you have to know the geometry, you have to work with the math, you have to do all of that stuff, as well as the different colors that we're using. So, that's one of the big deals that we're hopefully going to get a lot of support for, and that will be July 13th. Another thing that I do want to go ahead and point out is on number four, under the other, we have one of our artists that's come in, and she's donated an awful lot of time photographing the art because we're trying to get our website updated. She's donated several hours to help us get this, this first stage off the ground. We have another artist that has agreed to donate 100% of his art sales back to the gallery as well, so things are definitely shaken over there. The rest of the report, like I said, most of it's self-explanatory, the marketing, all of that stuff. You guys have any questions for me?
Appreciate it.
Okay. Is this the information that you would like for me to provide each month, whenever I give these reports? Or is there anything else that you would like to know?
I think, I think we're good, yeah, so far.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six is presentation of monthly activities and financial report by Main Street Guyman.
I'm Julianne Graham. I'm here on behalf of Main Street Guyman. We decided to do something a little different this month, knowing that it would be good to show the value Main Street has to the community in the downtown district. I'm on the board, I'm serving my second three-year term, so I've been involved with Main Street for about four years, and before that as a volunteer. This is Neptune Joseph. He's going to start our presentation by telling a little bit about the impact Main Street Guyman has had on him through the OPSU Aggies Football Families Program.
My name is Neptune Joseph, from Miami, Florida, attended OPSU 2012, and during my sophomore year, I met this lady by the name of Melin Johnson, which now I call Mom. And she actually started, she, ever since I met this lady, it feels like everything completely changed. Like, we started talking, and she was like, hey, do you want to come to this dinner with my family? But it was at the nephew's. I remember this day like it was yesterday. And I went there, and I met her, met her whole family, and ever since then, I haven't missed a family event. Like, you name it, I'm there, wedding, birthdays, I'm there. She actually started this program called The Football Family, and honestly, apart from me getting my bachelor in biology at OPSU, football, football family is probably one of the best things that ever happened to me at, in Oklahoma. This program helps, helps the kids that come from, like, states so far away, and they don't have a family that, that comes to the games, so having, having someone on the stands that's cheering for you makes you feel better, makes you play better, and that's pretty much what the whole football family is. It's, it's pretty much a life, a life-saving moment for us, for us kids, that's from so many different states. And I have something that happened to me Saturday. Saturday, I woke up, and I wasn't feeling too good, because I go to church with her every Sunday, and on Sunday morning, I woke up, I was in, it got worse, so I text, I'm like, hey, I don't feel too good, I can't, I can't breathe right, I don't know what's going on, but I can't go to church. I think I need to go to, to the hospital, and she was like, you know what, well, I'm not going to church, I'm just going to come to the house and pick you up, and we're going to go to the hospital. And thankful for me, she, she came and grabbed me, went to the ER, and I went, I did x-ray and everything, and the doctor said it's just a bruised muscle that I have on my back, and gave me some medication to, to make me feel better, whatever. And it's funny, because apart from her and her family, I don't have anybody out here, like, nobody whatsoever. So, if something were to happen to me, that's the first person they're going to call. And she's, she's my mom, and I love, and I love her dearly, and that's one thing, even, even when I leave Oklahoma, I'm always going to come back, the fact that for what this community has done for me. And a lot of kids pretty much felt the same way. Even though I graduated, a lot of kids right now, that's all they have, is the football family, and, and Coach Livinggood could testify for me, because a lot of kids, they came from so many places, now the football season is over with, there's no reason to stay in the summertime, because there's nothing to do. But there's over 30, 35 guys at the school right now that's working at Seaboard, different places, because they have that, that family bond. But from time to time, they'll come over to the park, and we have like a little cookout and everything, so it's pretty much like a big family, and, and I love the football family, and that's one thing I, I wish that, and pray that, just keep going, keep going on and on and on, and nonstop till time goes, so it's my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On this next slide, there's a little bit about who we are. So, Melin Johnson, who Neptune was talking about, is our director, our board members, and of course, our partners. The city of Guyman is an integral partner, IBTS, CHAM, ambassadors, major sponsors, our Bank of the Panhandle, City Bank and Trust, PTCI and Seaboard. So, Main Street is not a single person, it is a movement, and it is, it is a group of people who really care about their community and revitalizing the downtown district. On this next slide, it's, that talks a little bit more about what the mission of Main Street is, the four-prong approach, which I'm going to go into on these next slides. And just a reminder that the success relies on volunteers with, it's not just Melin who's adopted football players, it's a whole network of families in the community who have stepped up and said, yes, I will adopt a football player, and a lot of that is because of their relationship with Melin and Main Street Guyman. On the organization slide, it talks about the on-brace column, which you see in the Guyman Daily Herald, the TV show. Those are pieces of communication that help bring people downtown. Melin talks about the partners she has, she talks about what's happening, the programs in the community, and just another way of promoting downtown district. You can see there, there's a couple of youth programs under organization committee, Cassie's Kids and Transformers, and the, the football families falls under that. And if you have questions about any of these, you're welcome to follow up with us after or ask them as we go. The design committee is responsible for historical site designations, education seminars. The cleanup day is a big one. Pete Hedrick works with Melin to identify areas in the city that we can partner with and improve upon, and she recruits a lot of volunteers for that, as well as I know the city does, and it's just a team effort that works really well. The benches and trashcans downtown, the new trashcans here at the intersection were raised with funds from Main Street Guyman Projects and donations from businesses. The business development committee, that's a picture of the first career focus class three years ago, that's an eight-week program that, for only $250, people, we bring in speakers, we have local leaders who talk to the class about leadership development, so it's kind of building the next generation of leaders. And the shop local coalition came out of a meeting that the Main Street Guyman was hosting at Bank of the Panhandle for local businesses, and now that coalition meets at Main Street Guyman to help promote shopping local. On this next slide is the promotions. The special game day, which you see a picture of there with the kids with the baseball team at OPSU, that was a big hit. Last year was the first year that was done, and it received a lot of positive feedback, so obviously OPSU is a big partner with Main Street. Fiesta, Guyman, Main Street Guyman did take that this year and host that, and I believe it was $5,000, was donated toward the soccer complex fund, was donated back from proceeds raised at Fiesta, so we appreciate being able to do that. The Outback is a big event that brings people downtown. This next slide are a couple of thank you notes, verbatim, that Melin received, and it just helps bring home some of what Neptune was saying about the, the impact personally that Main Street Guyman has on people. I know it's had an impact on me from when I started the book club eight years ago. I started attending the book club, and then I had Panhandle Area Communicators, and now I'm on the board, but it's just something that I do because I, I enjoy it, I like to be able to volunteer, and I like the organization and this town. And on the next slide is the numbers, the stuff that people like to see. We have 99 members. Last year, there were 3,401 volunteer hours, and that is valued at $75,435. And then you can see some monthly numbers. Those Facebook followers, Melin has a very engaged, Main Street Guyman has a very engaged community on Facebook that, she promotes a lot of events and things happening, local businesses, and answers a lot of inquiries from local people who have questions. We've put in seven benches and four trashcans, and that was all I had. Do you have any questions of me as a board member, or Melin, she's here? And we appreciate the support from the city. That's one reason we wanted to, that's some of your dollars at work, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad you've enjoyed your stay in Oklahoma.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action on approval of ordinance number 833, an ordinance of the city of Guyman, Oklahoma, amending section 5-107 of the Guyman Code of Ordinances, providing for building permit, application and fees, repealing all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability and declaring an emergency when the ordinance is attached. So... Mr. Mayor, was there, is there an amended agenda with a resolution following that on setting fees? Yes. Okay, I didn't, I didn't have that. I might address that ordinance, because I, I drafted this after the last council meeting, considering the comments that were made by the council. What I did, I took the old ordinance and took the fee provisions out of it and put it in a resolution, and inserted in this ordinance the provision that the fees would be set by resolution, so that in the future, you didn't have to pass an ordinance if you wanted to change the fees. Then I added to this ordinance the fence permit, and the resolution that follows has a no-fee provision for a fence permit. And if the, I think there was a concern that there might need to be a fee if there were, had to be re-inspections. If that develops to be a problem in the future, then it can be addressed by resolution rather than having to do a new ordinance, so. So, this ordinance, the ordinance itself keeps the old building permit provisions in there, has, then adds the permit provision for the fence, and then the fee provisions are in the resolution that, that is the next item on the agenda, so that's...
Mr. Moore.
Mr. Mayor, I don't really have anything to add.
Well, I have one question.
Just that I think that everything is addressed, yes.
One question, just out of curiosity. How many, from your experience with this last several years, how many new fences are constructed in Guyman here?
I'll tell you right now, this last week, phone calls are coming in like crazy, so yes. I think a good majority of the inspections that have been done this week and consultations have been related to fencing.
Okay. Is that pro or con?
I think it means that there are a lot of people out there that want to put fences up, and it, it's a good thing, because being able to talk with them and talk about the issues, and make sure that easements aren't being crossed, and property lines aren't being encroached upon and all, that's a good thing with it. Also, one thing that I heard come up just in a discussion today was site distance triangles of the intersections. If fences aren't put in the right place, that causes real traffic issues, so this really helps to pull that all together and keep from having those problems. So, yeah, I'm just amazed at how many people, and it might be just because it's that time of year for fencing, to get out there and get things built, but yeah, I was surprised at how many that I've seen this last week, so.
I'd just like to point out, so everybody knows, that if we pass this, when I get ready to replace my fence according to this, let's see, I will have to file an application on forms provided by the city of Guyman to be accompanied by plans and specifications of a fence, including a plat of the lot drawn to scale, showing the location of the fence, survey pins or monuments, or a survey prepared by a qualified surveyor.
And sir, a lot of times why...
I see this as a little restrictive.
Well, sir, a lot of times why it sometimes is needed to have the survey pins in place is, is to make sure you get out there, in fact, I was visiting with a, a couple yesterday, and it's hard to determine exactly where the property lines are, and once again, you don't want to encroach upon rightaways, easements, neighbors' properties and all, and so in some cases, when you can't determine it through measurements, I know with personal experience with the house I had, neighbor went out there, he was an engineer, he was very precise about measuring, didn't look for property pins, and I went to pop up my sprinkler system, and it hit his fence. I went out there, and I located my pin, and he was over on my property about six inches.
Just because it says in some cases, it says it will, and I've already got a fence, but my neighbors complained about it, and so maybe we're going to fix the fence and put us up a new one, but I might have to get a survey and probably buy a qualified surveyor, which I'm not, and, no, I'm sorry. I think you guys, never mind. Everybody in town knows my opinion, so.
The intent of this is protection, to protect the public, to protect the easements, to protect the rightofway, that's the intent of this. It's, you know, nothing more than that, so.
I'll read that one.
But, but on the, on the part on the, on the plat map, it can be drawn on quarter-inch graph paper to scale?
Yeah, yeah. The couple I met with yesterday had a piece of paper, they'd drawn it out for me, it was to scale, where, you know, the measurements were there, where you could see, that worked with it. It is very helpful, you know, that's what, how I typically like to do it, is go to the store and buy graph paper, because then I can break it up into tenths and, and measure it that way and draw it up pretty easy, so.
And the, the registered survey would be the last resort?
Very last resort, yeah. What I always recommend to people is if you can hang a good magnet on a string, measure what you can for, from what you know from the center line of the road, for what that street rightofway is supposed to be, get out there with a magnet, get out there with a metal detector, if you've got one, that's usually the best way to try to find the pins. In some cases, pins are, are missing, and that can try to be a problem. Sometimes people have surveys done, and they don't have pins placed, and that's another part. But typically, before a house sells, a mortgage company will require a survey be done with pins, and so, you know, if you've got a mortgage on your home, it's very typical that there's pins there.
Any other discussion, questions?
I think my concern is the people that do not follow the city and what we're trying to accomplish, and I feel like sometimes government leaves them in the dust in reality. But, you know, I don't know, President Nixon made the comment about the silent majority. I think there's times that we forget that there's people that do not understand what we're trying to accomplish, and we do a poor job of communicating to them what we actually want. It's, it sounds good in theory, but, you know, sometimes it's not practical for some people to actually be able to do what we require them to do.
Yes, and so we really do try to work with the applicants, you know, the example, yesterday, I went out, measured it off with them, took out a wheel, really looked at it, and, and examined everything that we could with it. And so, that's, that is our goal. If that hasn't been done, we're working to improve that, you know? And we try to communicate through the website, everything that we can, and we plan on improving the community development website to where we can put this information and have it more readily available with it.
If I read this correctly, there's absolutely no alteration you can do on your house without getting a building permit, is that correct?
That would not be correct. Obviously, if you come in and do some work that's cosmetic, that does not require a permit.
Says right here, any person desired to erect a building or make any alteration or addition to an existing building.
I'm not sure on, on that. The building codes, the IRC...
That's in the, I might address, that's in the current ordinance.
Bottom line, kidding you.
Yeah, the IRC, the IVC, they're very clear on, on what...
So, when you, when you look at the words alteration, addition, things of that nature, in the residential code, those have specific definitions of what an addition is, of what an alteration is. So, you have to go back to those, and typically, an addition is, is when you're extending the air-conditioned space of a structure. An addition could be things where you get into moving a door, so you're starting to affect sheer loads and things of that nature. It's not something small or simple, if they're just interior, moving something around, it's not that big of a deal. So, when you see those definitions, they are definitely referred back to in the codes, and they have specific requirements of what quote-unquote "an addition" is, or "an alteration" is.
Is an alteration, I want to knock out a wall so I can enlarge my living room. Is that an alter?
If, typically, if it's a structural load-bearing wall, that would start to trigger that, because you don't, you move a structural load, your roof starts caving in on you. So, there are those conditions. Another one is, many times, we see people want to add some extra outlets. That doesn't require a permit, but if you're going to add a room and an entire new circuit, now you're talking alteration, so there's specific requirements in there.
Doesn't it require an electrician permit?
In some cases, it doesn't. Again, it really gets into the severity, or the, if it's a minor or major alteration of what's happening. If you're just moving an interior wall that ain't holding anything up, it really don't require a permit. But now, if that wall contains a breaker panel box, and you got to move it now, you're talking electrical permit. So, it's, it's really kind of complicated, and you have to divide and see what's happening.
Do we have a...
The state of Oklahoma also does allow you to do electrical work on your own home.
Do we have a list of what we would need a permit for? I mean, you say, things are more severe than others, how do we, how do we define severe? I mean, everyone else can define different than I may, just out of curiosity. So, so one of the things, since I'm now here, one of the things that I'm going to be doing is defining a workflow diagram of what requires a permit, and it's just pretty simple and straightforward. If you're doing this, you follow this line, and it requires or triggers a permit, if you're doing this, it doesn't. So, that is one of the items that we are working on, is to develop that what requires a permit. It's going to be a pretty easy-to-read flow diagram, and we're going to assemble that with some additional information of what forms are needed, what the fee schedule is, and have it available on the website out here in printed form. It's just going to take us a little bit of time to develop that, but it is being developed.
And those are all defined within those, within the building codes as well. So, it's just pulling that information out of the building code and making it more accessible to the public.
It's not something that we create or define, it's already defined, you guys have voted on it, it's just a matter of assimilating it so that it's easy for someone to follow. Thank you.
I'd like that document created before we vote on it.
Yeah. On the, on the fences?
No.
No, what, what we need permits for? Oh, that's, that's already been a done deal, many, many moons ago, that's already been... But a list that, like, we've talked about.
What you were just talking about.
Yeah, that's, that's just a method of...
What you're planning on, on...
Yeah, yes, that document, I can create it, it's just not that difficult to create, it just takes a little bit of time, but what requires those permits, it's, that's already been adopted in the codes.
Oh, so not only by the city, but by the state?
Yeah. So, it isn't something that IBTS or the city defines, that's defined by those codes.
So, sir, what I think I hear you asking is that you would like to have that put in written format available for the public before you want to move forward with this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's something we can do.
In my opinion, some people of the community may have better access, may be better with the internet, vice versa, may have a way to get that information, and there's a lot of people that don't have access to information, because they don't even know where to start. They wouldn't know, they just think, hey, I pay my bill here. They don't know who they can ask, where they would start, and I think that really will clarify, I mean, I think we know where we need to go, obviously, but I think there's a big group handful of people that I don't think have any clue. Yeah, yeah, you're right. It's, it's really common to create what we would call a residential permit package, and then you do a commercial permit package, and you put those things in printed form and in digital form, so if they want to walk in City Hall and pick one up, they can do that.
I believe that was one of those things that IBTS said, when we first brought them in, they said they were going to create, is that correct?
There, it was already in existence, it just needed... Uh, there, it was already in existence, it just needed to be updated. So it's, there's a package that's available, it just has the old codes and things of that nature.
So, any other discussion? Can we have a motion table?
I'll make a motion that we table item number seven concerning the ordinance number eight thirty-three.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to table?
Alvedras, did you second?
Yes, ma'am.
Crone?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
We'll be back. Thank you, gentlemen.
Take away two.
Agenda item eight, I don't think we need to take any action on that. So we'll go forward to agenda item number nine, is discussion and possible action on authorizing to advertise for bids on the sanitation grapple truck. As we're all aware, when we passed the fee structure this year, there's a, the pickup fee on our waste, on our trash bill, and that's to purchase one of those, and the staff would like to have the ability to go ahead and advertise to get bids to purchase one.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the city to go, to advertise for bids for sanitation grapple truck.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crone?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number ten is discussion and possible action to authorize, on authorizing to advertise for bids for an eighteen-wheel sanitation trailer. I think that's a replacement for the, one of them out at the landfill that's ruined.
Is this really an eighteen-wheeled trailer?
I don't think, I think that's, I think that's a typo.
I was gonna say, I want to see an eighteen-wheeled trailer.
I saw one yesterday.
One of those transport trailers, they're all over the level.
Yeah, that's, it'd, it'd have eight wheels underneath it, though.
Not eighteen.
Yeah.
Not eighteen wheels.
I didn't count.
But, but it's a transfer truck, trailer. Okay. Does that clarify it for everybody? And we're assuming that they've hidden one in front of the eight. We'll call it a typographical error.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city to advertise for bids for a wheeled sanitation trailer.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crone?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number eleven is discussion and possible action on notice of hearing to declare a structure dilapidated in order of removal of dilapidated structure and set date for completion of work at the following property, lots nine and ten, block three of the Barrett Douglas Edition, also known as seven oh two North May. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have some board, or some slides on here to just give you an idea of the property that we're talking about, seven oh two North May. It's basically a location map. This gives you an idea of, of the condition of the property, that's the structure in question. The next slide shows you a couple more images to that. When you have a structure, I've had this in the past, going home where it gets to, where it's so old and it's, it's not been taken care of, it starts to push out from the bottom and rots out from the bottom, that's what's going on with this. So I've actually had some in the past where they've had debris from inside the house pushed through because it's, it's weakened so much. So that's the condition of this trailer, so this is what, or excuse me, this, this mobile home, and so that's what we're working out with this. If I could have you come to the next slide, just a few more of the property itself, this is from today, so a picture that I, she just showed up the other direction, other arrow direction. Instead, you can always use P for previous.
Sorry.
So N for next, and then you come down to the next slide. That's today, the condition of the property today. As you can see, there's some other issues out there, too. Grass, high grass weeds, there's also some abandoned vehicles, so those are items that you'll be seeing in the future on this property. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you for the-
Have you been in contact with the owner?
The contact, the very next slide shows the process and when notifications have been sent out, and I have not heard, and staff has not heard back from the property owner on this. And I do know there are several folks here tonight, as I saw that they signed in, they had indicated property, so it's, it's possible that we may have an applicant here tonight, or not an applicant, I'm sorry, a property owner here tonight that would like to speak to that.
What, in the order of determination, you're asking us to, to, to give a timeline? What's the staff on this one, what's the staff's recommendation?
Our staff is to follow the process that we typically use with that, and I have to, I'm sorry, I have to look at the order. The order would be, I believe it's thirty days and that it is July, if I'm not mistaken, that goes out to July fifteenth. I don't see it on the order, but I don't have glasses on.
It's not on the order.
It's not on the order that we-
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, it would be thirty days, and I believe that that would be July fifteenth because of the weekend.
Any comments? Motion?
Is the owner here?
Is Mrs. Hefner?
With the owner of this property here, would like to visit, talk? It's been like this for several years. Okay. Don't guess there's anyone here? Any other discussion?
No.
Motion?
I'm making a motion, we declare this structure dilapidated in order of removal of the dilapidated structure and set a date for completion of work in the following property, lot nine and ten, block three, Barrett Douglas Edition, also known as seven oh two North May.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Agenda item number twelve is discussion and possible action on notice of hearing to declare a property of public nuisance in order of removal of trash weeds and grass and set date for completion of work at the following property, lot number two, block twenty-five of the Funk Edition, also known as ten ten North Lilia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just a correction from what I said earlier, the thirty days would be out to the fifteenth, however, that falls on a Sunday, so we would be looking at July sixteenth, which is a Monday. Apologize, I could get my calendar out quick now. With that, so if we could go back to the slide presentation, the very next slide, next from there, this again gives you a location, it's just south of northeast eleven on Lilia. Next slide will show you basic, the condition of the property itself. Next slide, please, shows you the debris around the area and all, and if we could go to the next slide, once again, there's more debris in the back, this is taken from the alley. And if we could get the next slide, actually, this is actually the property today, there are some abandoned vehicles on the side, once again, that's something that we'll deal with at a later date, but the property has had mowed, it has been mowed, however, as you can see by the pictures, it's been mowed, but the debris is still there. Once again, the order would be for thirty days, and if we show the next slide, the process that we've gone through for notification, and staff, I have not been contacted, nor have staff on this property.
Okay. Is the property owner here with, if you'd like to come up?
My name is Joe Hoffman, and calling people to come in and help me clean it up, it'll be thirty days before they can get here, so I asked an extension to ninety days to try to get it done and cleaned up for the city. Okay? I called the vehicle people, and they're getting back to me in ten or fifteen days. They're living in Illinois, Colorado, and Oklahoma City. So, I asked the council to extend it to ninety days if they can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything you can do in the, like, the first thirty days?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to move some wood and debris out of the yard. There'll be just a little meat with a little pickup, all that stuff off.
Okay.
The transfer station told me it'd be, be a long time before I take it out by the alley and call them to come by and get it.
Okay. I'd like to see a progress report in thirty days personally.
So, do you, do you wanna do the order and then reevaluate?
That's what I'd like to do. Make sure we're getting something accomplished, so. And if you come back in good faith in, in thirty days, and we know, then I don't have a problem giving them another extension, but if nothing gets done in the next thirty days, then I think we're spinning our wheels.
Sir, sir, we would be glad to come back with a report for you in thirty days. If you'd like to go ahead and set it for ninety days, and we'll give you a report in thirty days, and then you can make a decision on, on what else you wanna do at that time. If you're more than happy to do that.
Is that what you'd like us to do, the staff?
We'd like to get it cleaned up as quickly as possible, 'cause obviously we have neighbors who are complaining, but if, we, we would work with that approach of that.
So could we do, could we do thirty day, thirty day determination, thirty day, look at it in twenty-eight or thirty days and report back? And then, then we could leave it to staff to extend it with our blessing?
If that, you could, if you'd like us to do that, we could do that as well.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Anything else?
That'd be it, sir.
Okay. Let's, we'll, we'll see what we wanna do. Any discussion, motion?
I make a motion that we declare property of public nuisance in order of removal of trash weeds and grass and set for completion of work the following property, lot two, block twenty-five, Funk Edition, AKA ten ten North Lila, with thirty days, and give the staff the option of extending it if necessary.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number thirteen. Thirteen. Is discussion and possible action on notice of hearing to declare a structure dilapidated in order of removal of dilapidated structure and set date for completion of work at the following property, lot thirteen, block twelve, the Barrett Douglas Edition, AKA five oh one North Cromley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and once again, we're looking at this for a determination which would be within thirty days, and that would, once again, fall on July sixteen.
You guys have been busy.
Excuse me?
Been busy.
Yes. Location of it, if you can see from the aerial on North Cromley, this is a property that has been vacant, abandoned for quite some time. We have been in touch with the property owner, the property owner has been doing some work on it, if you could see, you know, this is the basic condition that we found it in with the inspections. The next slide just give you a little more, as you can see, the foundation's actually collapsed under the back, and if you can see hanging down from that window, that's actually the plumbing that's hanging there with it, so roof's collapsing on this as well. So the next slide, please. This is how I found the property this morning. Once again, the property owner has been out there and has been doing work on this, and has been cleaning it up, so they are showing progress with this. And we have, they have talked with us about cleaning it up and how they'd like to try to work with it, so, you know, I, we, we should be happy to, to work with them in whatever way we can. Understand the condition of this structure, it's very dangerous, and the complaints that we've received is that there have been children playing around there, especially that exposed hole with the foundation with it, and so that's one reason why we're here with you tonight, is, is the condition of it, and, you know, it's not secured where children can get involved, so we are concerned about that.
What, what, well, you said you've been visiting with the property, what's your recommendation?
Our recommendation at this point would be the thirty days to get the, the work done on this, and if that's not done, to move forward with the abatement. And the order, the order shows the estimated cost of abatement to be seven thousand, I'm sorry, I haven't, I haven't mentioned that with the other items.
It shows nine.
Oh, this shows nine? I'm sorry, I must have the wrong phone.
Statue?
This one shows nine. Better, seven, excuse me.
Yeah, I've got on Cromley, I, uh, seven thousand.
Does that include the demolition of the building?
That would include the demolition of the building.
Yeah, seven.
Okay. Liz, you wanna come talk?
You bet. That was a really unfriendly approach they took in my contact, it was a certified registered letter, which I came in and I talked, I believe it was maybe Marissa upstairs, requested to speak to somebody else, I said I was asking for ninety days. I acquired this thing at a tax sale, and for a twenty-five by a hundred and forty-foot lot, I've never seen such a mess in my life. And there has been a substantial amount of work done, I got started on it, wound up doing something else for a while. The cellar is removed, filled in with dirt, it was on the back part, the other piece of trash back there. Right now, I'm sitting on a waiting list on getting a roll-off. Called them a couple of weeks ago, they put me on the list, called them Monday, said you're nine, because I'm at the point now, I need to remove the stuff inside to continue on with it. The part that's got that partial cellar underneath it, I'm gonna remove, I wanna leave the original little piece in the middle, and I asked for ninety days.
So, could we do, would, would you be agreeable to do the thirty and then staff review and work with you on that?
That'll be okay. I hope I get my roll-off before thirty days.
I understand, but, but I think there's, I think they have some work with you on the, looking at it in thirty days.
The, the roll-off is really all you're waiting on then? It is now, I'm cleaning out the inside, 'cause it's basically all full of trash. And like I said, I wanna keep that one little piece there in the middle.
Is there any way possibly to alleviate the problem of possible children, putting any kind of temporary fence around it, for your safety and ours?
You know, I haven't seen any kids playing around that, I realize in the house to the north, there are some, but I haven't ever had them even come over even close when I've been there, Kim.
Okay.
I'd like to ask you about, you weren't, didn't like the way you were approached with-
You said you just got certified. I would've liked a personal contact.
Okay, that's-
Certified registered letter.
Okay, well, that's what-
And then request, you know, when I talked to her-
Right.
I was ready to talk to somebody else to discuss this, rather than being here.
Right.
Understand.
And I got no phone call, she left my phone number, I don't, I don't know whether you were the guy that was one step up or not.
Probably am.
And you are?
Doug Moore.
Doug Moore? I guess it's nice to meet you.
I'm sorry, I don't have a card, or a handy card or, you know.
Well, when, when you say the portion in the middle, you're talking to the-
There's a little original white structure there in the center, and yes, I was going after getting rid of all of that, that was, where they, for whatever reason dug that, about four foot hole around it. reason dug that, about four-foot hole around it. And like I said, I get my roll-off, get it cleaned out on the inside, I'll have that out, fill that in with dirt, and then you got that much out of the way.
And that, the small white area that, what you're talking about, the building?
You can look at it, and you can kind of tell it's the original piece. They, they enclosed the front porch, which is terrible-looking, and then they added on to the north, went all the way around it.
The foundation's in good shape in that?
Yeah, at least there's no hole under that original part in the middle. I mean, it's, it has no, I mean, it's just sitting on some cement blocks. So, yeah, there will be no way to get underneath it or whatever from outside.
So, you're, you're hoping that you can tear all the lean-offs down and that original structure, your, your plans are hopefully to renovate it and make it live?
Basically, I'm shooting for a little storage building out of it, just close it up.
The zone district wouldn't allow for a storage building without, a storage building in a residential is allowed as an accessory unit, but not as a standalone on itself.
Is that...
You can't have a vacant lot with a...
How is that zoned?
...residential. I, I believe, I mean, I would have to double-check whether residential's on this.
Okay, I'm not sure on that.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have to double-check. If, if it is a commercial or an industrial, it might be possible to do that. Staff's been very concerned about the integrity of the entire structure, and so that's why our recommendation was for removal of that altogether.
Well, the middle piece is okay.
Like I said, our, at this point in time, staff is concerned about that. We don't have any structural reports that would tell us otherwise.
Any questions?
So, we're gonna, thirty days and then get a progress report, and with the staff extending it to ninety, if you're comfortable with the progress.
If that's the desire of the council.
Okay. Hopefully, you'll have a roll-off in ninety days. Hopefully, you'll have a roll-off in ninety days.
I hope so, too. Either that or you can bring me to the city dumpster.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we declare the structure dilapidated and order removal of dilapidated structure, and for the completion of work for the July sixteenth, with the staff having the option of extending it for another ninety days if progress is adequate.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
You've got five ayes.
All right. Agenda item number fourteen is discussion and possible action on notice of hearing to declare property a public nuisance and order removal of trash, weeds, and grass, and set a date for completion of work at the following property, lot one and two, block twenty, Stonebreaker Z Edition, also known as thirteen-twenty North Roosevelt. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I know council's done enough of these, but maybe just to, to let the public know, the reason why we sent certified mail, we run the ad in the paper, and we post the property, those are the requirements by state statutes and by our ordinance as well. So, I know that may seem unfriendly, but that's the approach that, that we have to take to be in compliance, so, thank you. Once again, with this property, we have an order same as the others for thirty days, which would be July sixteenth as well, and we've got an approximated value of nine thousand dollars for the cleanup on this. And if I could have you, this is the location, and, and this is interesting with a couple of them. The, the aerial photograph is off of Google Earth, and from what we can estimate, that that photograph was taken by construction that was occurring around the city at the time, as it's probably spring to summer of two thousand sixteen. So, as you can see, you can see the, the debris around the house in the aerial photograph. So, the next slide, please. That would be the front of the home and along the side. The backyard, take it from the alley, that's actually taken from the street. The picture on the top, right down below alongside the alley, and then I believe that's also along the alley, I'm sorry, that's along the street on the back. So, if we can have you go to the next slide, just more shots. That's from the street looking down the alley. That's looking along the street on the south, or, excuse me, the north side of the home. Next slide. This is basically photographs that came from today. It's, it's been mowed, they're very similar condition. They're actually, when I was there earlier, there were folks out there with the dog yard, some children playing, and, and a woman out there cleaning up after the dog yard and all. But as you can see, the back area is still in the same condition. The alleyway is torn up right now because they're replacing a gas line. So, that makes it a little hard to see what's going on through here, but the, obviously, picture from the alley, still the vehicles out front that are not operational. And so, this is essentially the, the property from there. If I can have you go on to the first, once again, this is the timeline for the process for notification. There actually were prior code enforcement issues with this property back in two thousand sixteen. At that time, Mitch Wagner, the building inspector at the time, and a police officer had gone to the site, but I don't have any more details on it. So, there actually has been quite a bit of contact made with this one in the past as well. So, again, it's for thirty days for cleanup on this as well.
Does that include the fence?
Excuse me?
Does this include the fence, either the fixing of the fence?
The repair of the fence. From what I can see with the order, I don't believe, sorry, I don't believe it does. I believe it's just dealing with the debris and the grass and weeds that are, would be remaining.
Okay.
Is the property owner here, if he'd like to address this?
Sixteen.
William Stotio, property owner. The two thousand sixteen that you're talking about was done while the roof and windows were being replaced. Company was supposed to remove the debris, they did not. I have removed most of it and am physically trying to remove the rest. The only thing on my property right now is basically yard ornaments, as was told back when the city came after me and Mike Moore recommended, represented me, and at that time, they said they would not ever come back on me as long as those yard ornaments are there. Now, the property itself is in good repair. I've had a problem with the city removing the dumpster. For two weeks, they did not remove that dumpster. They did when they started on the, repair of the gas line back there. They did move the dumpster, and it's taken care of at this point. I have tried to do what I can. I'm not physically able to do a bunch, but I'm attempting to comply as best I can. I have basically my construction equipment, bricks and, and stones, that are construction materials which I would use in a, a business. But they're properly stored on pallets and in the back, and everything back there is pretty well cleaned up. Like I said, I have made arrangements with two people here to remove some of the, what would you say, metal that's been back there, but have not had any success. And any attempt at contacting the city on this, I finally wrote them a certified letter in order to get a copy of the ordinances and asked to speak to the man. I have never spoke to anyone verbally. They stuck the ordinance on the front window of my house, claiming this. My son-in-law had left and come back five minutes later, they were playing. There were people in the house, there was no attempt to contact or in any way settle it. I would like to know personally what he's talking about, because I have a fence there, it's metal fence, and it's not exactly pretty, but I had thirty panels of used cedar picket fence that somebody stole. My neighbor across the street had a video of it. The city officer told me they were worth ten dollars a section. I don't, I told him, "I think I can buy any amount of used cedar picket fence at ten dollars a section." It's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a section new. That has, my understanding is that the police department did locate it, but when they went across the street to get the video, they knocked on the door. The son-in-law was there, was washing dishes. Time he dried his hands, got to the front door, the two officers were plumb across the street in their vehicles driving off. That's less than two minutes. I've had stuff stolen for the last four years, approximately over three months. I finally quit reporting it to the police department because I'm attempting to save the city money. They do nothing but give you a fancy business card, pencil and number on it. Two days later, you call about that number and they don't know it. I basically feel like I've been harassed by the city ever since about nineteen seventy. But like I said, I put a new roof on the house, and the company is there, the sign is still in the front yard. My wife mows the yard about every time it gets two and a half, three inches high. She's weeded it all, the backyard, and everything there has been done. The only thing that's in the back, there's one log I cut off a tree, it's too heavy for me to move, and I'm waiting for it to dry enough that I can remove it for firewood to the person that I have told I'd give the firewood to. Quick as that's done and I can get it, it'll be out of there. I've got some trees that I need to get trimmed. I contacted Tri-County, and they cannot do anything about it to get them out of their line so that I can get them removed until after the city's through with their deal. I would like, like a ninety-day easement to allow for the rest of the property which is there to get it out. Like I said, I filled the dumpster, the city didn't pick it up, and finally, they did when they started down the alley. The trash truck did take some of the trash that was by the dumpster and shoved it through my neighbor's new fence, busted the gate and two panels and fence on the end of it. But that's a different issue, I think. The situation is, I need some time to finish what I'm doing right now to do the completion and repair on the private businesses, buildings that I've got back there, and to remove the rest of what's in there. I don't know if you'd call it debris. I've got a, a four-wheel trailer, which is farm trailer, but it handles sixteen-foot boards, which I use for walkboards in my business, and I don't consider that debris.
Have you got a list of what you actually want this gentleman to do?
I've asked him, for him to talk to me or someone.
Sir, no, not within the file. One has not been prepared. I would think, looking at the photographs that we provided, it would be somewhat obvious on what needs to be done, but if council would like us to take the time, I mean, obviously, you'll have a hard time getting in there in the next thirty days because the alleyway is torn up.
Right.
But, you know, it's, it's hard to go through every single thing, and, and it's really, you know, it's not our duty to say, "This, not that, this, not that, this, not that." Our duty is to say, "Here it is. I can provide him with the ordinances," and, and we're more than happy to do that. Sorry, I have not seen a certified letter yet. I'm, I'm not saying that one hasn't been sent, I just have not seen it yet.
I have, I have a reply from the city that I received on the eleventh of this month with the ordinances, nothing else. And this is why I'd ask what, I'd like to know what you feel is out there that is not...
And, and sir, we're not going to sit there and say...
No, I understand that.
No, I understand that. But what I'm saying is, in there, back when Mr. Moore represented me in the city, there has been nothing added, in fact, there's been some stuff removed, that were yard ornaments.
I like to, council, I'd like to...
There's been complaint? Has there been complaint?
Who served the complaint?
Yes, there's been complaints.
I'd like to know who did.
That's why we're acting, everything that's before you at this time, we are at this point in time with code enforcement, more in a reactive mode than, than, you know, more of a go out there and fight, it's more dealing with the complaints coming in.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to know who made the complaint.
I, I could not tell you, and I'm not sure legally we can tell you.
Legally, I'm supposed to be faced with the accuser, which the code enforcement officer has to have an accuser with him. That's what I understand.
Okay. Anything else?
I'd say I would like a ninety-day extension to go ahead and clean up what's there, but most of what's there is there legally. I did repair the one section of fence that I had at the back that was leaning against it. I put it up against the fence. But, and I had a form that had deteriorated, and I got rid of it.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, here it states you want the order, the order says removal of trash, weeds, grass.
Yes.
That's, that's about all that's in the order.
That's what the order says.
Yes, at this time, we did not mention the, the structures and all, or not, I'm sorry, not the structures, the vehicles.
The vehicles are properly tagged.
Okay. Anything else, gentlemen? Thank you, Mr. Stotio.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to have a, an extension.
I think we'll do what we've done with the last two, you know, thirty days, progress report. If staff is happy with your progress, then I think they'll go ahead and give you the other sixty days. Is that agreeable?
That's the will of the council.
Well, as long as we're, he's showing progress, I think, right?
Yes.
Now, and I think that's...
He's complaining about my fence. As far as I know, there is no fence ordinance at that time. That fence has been there since June of nineteen sixty-seven.
Okay. As you see the order, nothing is mentioned on the fence.
On the fence, okay. Okay.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we declare property a public nuisance and order removal of trash, weeds, and grass, and set date of completion for July sixteenth, with the option of letting the city staff give them a thirty or sixty days extension.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
You've got five ayes.
Agenda item fifteen is discussion and possible action to authorize the removal of former city manager Kimberly Meek and add present city manager Mitchell Wagner to the city bank, city bank and trust credit card accounts to have access, access to and to request changes to accounts.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the removal of former city manager Kimberly Meek and add present city manager Mitchell Wagner to the city bank and trust credit card accounts to have access to and to request changes to accounts.
Second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
You've got five ayes.
Agenda item number sixteen is discussion and possible action on authorizing the removal of Renee Harland from the depository bank accounts for the city of Guyman, Guyman Utilities Authority, Guyman Industrial Authority, and Guyman Airport Authority. Authority, Guyman Industrial Authority and Guyman Airport Authority. She was our financial person for a while.
I'll make a motion that we authorize removal Renee Harland from the depository bank accounts of the city of Guyman, Guyman Utilities Authority, Guyman Industrial Authority and Guyman Airport Authority.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item seventeen is discussion and possible action to accept the recommendation of the cemetery board to make and install gates on signs at Elmer Cemetery with some of the cemetery rules per attached document.
Mr. Mayor, I've, trying to draw these up, a little slow here. I'm going to make a motion that we don't approve this, but I wanted to say why. Some of these rules that they have asked for, one of them that says benches, yeah, benches and statues must meet the rules adopted by the board in nineteen ninety-four. The rules have been amended and changed numerous times since nineteen ninety-four and I think that leaves it a little bit questionable as to what you can and cannot do. Also decorations for Memorial Day must be placed, may be placed two weeks prior and removed by July tenth. I question whether that was a typo or not. I think they probably intended June tenth due to the fact that every time the cemetery people mow, they pick those decorations up, move them, mow, set them back down. So I think that we would be authorizing signs that would have to be changed all those immediately. So I would like to make a motion that we do not approve this. Trying to get back to it now. Recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item eighteen is discussion and possible action on adoption of the city of Guyman Code of Ethics for elected officials.
I would, eighteen, nineteen and twenty is actually tied together, if I understand this correctly.
Right.
And to me, I have a problem with O-MAG coming to us and saying, we'll give you six thousand dollars if we have no.
Claims.
Claims, thank you. In those three years, if we adopt the Practice Handbook and the Code of Ethics, and to me, in a way, this is almost unethical for them to ask us to adopt these in order to get the six thousand dollars. I'd, I'd like, go ahead, I'll let you.
Hi, Larry.
Hi.
I'm Bill Tack with O-MAG. We don't usually hear those two words put together, unethical in O-MAG.
I know. Well, that's kind of how I feel. You're, you're hanging a carrot out there for six thousand dollars if we accept and approve the Practice Handbook and the Code of Ethics. Is that correct?
Well, first of all, we have two programs I'd be happy to make a presentation on. One of them is retention and it has to do with your claims experience. That's twelve thousand dollars. We take twenty percent of your liability premium. We set it aside in a loss fund. Depending on your claims experience, you can get that full twenty percent back if you have no claims. Now, that's completely separate from our recognition program, which is a training program we offer to governing bodies across the state. It's a voluntary program and councils that want to participate in it, receive training, adopt best practices, receive a financial incentive. We believe that the best-run cities and towns have fewer claims and the claims they have cost less money to resolve. There's an old saying, you're about my age, you've heard it before, what gets measured gets done. The people across the parking lot from us, future point of view have improved it two ways. What gets measured gets done. What gets measured with feedback gets improved. That's the stability test. Every June thirtieth to, every July first to June thirtieth, a town is eligible to go through the recognition program on a voluntary basis. The stability test, if it's taken annually, gives you a datum point, a zero and a number line, that longitudinally over time, you can measure your progress. Are you getting better in these ten key areas of municipal operations? Are you staying the same? Are you getting worse? What gets measured gets done. What gets measured with feedback gets improved. What gets measured and rewarded gets repeated. And so our Board of Trustees authorized us to make funds available to reward cities and towns that want to engage in best practice training, handbook. We don't tell you what has to be in the handbook. We have a sample on the website that's better than a blank sheet of paper. It's a place to start. We don't dictate to you what's in your handbook. You know, a handbook's a really good tool. If you're newly elected, it's an orientation document. It helps somebody who gets on and all they know is they got one more vote than the guy or the gal that ran against them and this means yes and this means no and this is where you sit and good luck to you. You know, if you go to work for a big enough place, they'll give you two things. They'll give you a job description that tells you how to win at that job and they'll give you a handbook that tells you what the benefits are, what the culture is, what the organization's about. A handbook is an orientation tool to a new person, helps them not violate the law, helps them know what the rules are, tells them how to win. From the organization's standpoint, it helps perpetuate a culture and really that's what you want. You want to create and perpetuate a culture that will be here when your great-granddaughter's sitting in this chair because Guyman's going to go on a long, long time. So we put together four things under our recognition program. Adopt a council handbook because when we started this, Mayor, about three towns in the whole state had a council handbook. Take training. We don't tell you how, the training has to be. We're happy to bring it in person as I'm here tonight. You can do it online, you can get it when you go to the municipal league conference. By the way, we have scholarships that pay for you to go to the municipal conference. You can do local gov you, you can get it when you go to the mayor's conference and need it next, next week. We don't tell you how you have to do it. You take the stability test, which is ten questions on ten key areas of municipal operation. Over a thousand people in over a hundred cities and governing bodies have taken that test. And then you pass a resolution and say you did everything, we're ready to receive our money. Three years ago, O-MAG reduced your premiums, your liability premiums by twelve percent. The trustees have made that reduction permanent. If you have no claims, you'll get an additional twenties percent back. Now, that, that claim expense is just for, chap unfortunately fell down on the sidewalk and we had to write him a check because we were negligent on the sidewalk. Doesn't include any of my exorbitant salary or my gasoline to get here or an attorney's fee. It's only the money we would write to chap. And so if you have zero claims, you get the twenty percent back. If you have ten million dollars' worth of claims, you'll get a visit from me saying, what's going on in Guyman, but other than that, you face no penalty. And every July first starts a brand-new year. July one, June thirtieth starts a brand-new year for both retention and recognition. I'm very pleased to be here. We were in Boy City on Monday night doing this training, being all lusty. We've done about fifty-one towns this year. That's about ten percent of the towns that belong to O-MAG. I'm happy to proceed with the training or I'm happy to not. It's at the majority of the council's will. But O-MAG is not unethical and there is no ransom or coercion involved in voluntarily participating in recognition. As a matter of fact, I recognize some of your faces. We were here about three years ago and did this training at the library, but at that time, it didn't have a financial component to it. Wasn't incentive for towns to try to adopt these best practices, to provide these resources for the governing body. You know, there's a lot of training for police chiefs and clerks and city managers, but what's the training for you all? The municipal league has training for newly-elected officials and it's really good, but that's a one-time thing. And we feel like the people that volunteer their time to serve their community could do a better job if they had more training. Not saying anybody does a bad job, just saying we feel like the best-run cities and towns have fewer claims, which helps the pool overall, and the claims they have cost less money to resolve. So I'm glad to have an opportunity to address your concern this evening, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, on number eighteen, we all know that Mr. Wagner's lost his grandfather and was out of the office or at least pretty busy in the office. I had a lot of questions on eighteen that I wanted to ask, but I really didn't want to hit him with this week, with him this week at this point in time. I would make a motion that we do not adopt City of Guyman Code of Ethics for elected officials. Number eighteen.
Table or just not adopt?
I would make a motion, we do not adopt it at this time till we get a better clarification.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras. Livinggood. Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have one nay, four ayes.
Agenda item nineteen is discussion and possible action on adopting the City of Guyman Best Practices Handbook. Might add, we got, we received a draft of the handbook or what this last week and I haven't had time personally to sit down and honestly and really put the time and thought into what parts of that we want to adopt. Staff did it and it was thirty-some-odd pages long.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven with cover. So I personally would like to have a little more time for us, maybe have a work session and, and have.
Based on your comments, I'll make a motion that we table this number nineteen.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras.
I took the time to read most of it, so nay.
Swager.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have one nay, four ayes.
Okay. Twenty, review, agenda item number twenty, review of Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Groups for Municipal Liability Property Protection, MLPP, Declaration and Explanation of Coverage. So, do we, Mr. Tack, would you like to, have you, have you already given that to us? Was that part of your?
What we typically do, or what we've done about fifty times this year, is that we have training that involves the four steps for recognition. Those four steps are adopt a council handbook, take the stability test, review the deck page of the recognition, the evidence of coverage page and, I've lost track of what the other thing is. That's a package. It's the things that you do together. You all have declined to adopt the council handbook this evening or anything that goes with it. The evidence of coverage is part of the training. We have a four-minute video that goes with that, but you all have already decided that you're not going to participate during this fiscal year, which ends June thirtieth. So in order for you to get the most benefit out of the training and to receive the financial incentive, the six thousand dollar check, which is not a credit on your bill, it's a check, it would probably be best for us to reschedule after July one.
Okay.
And at that time, your manager will have dealt with the loss of his grandfather and the things that are associated with that. You all will have had time to review the documents that go into your council handbook and then we'd be very happy to coordinate with staff about how you all like to proceed at that time, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item twenty-two, we'll take no, twenty-one, we'll take no action on. Agenda item twenty-two, we'll take no action on. Agenda item number twenty-three is presentation and acknowledgement, acknowledged receipt of the three-D visualization fly-through for the Guyman Soccer Complex. Agenda item number twenty-four is reports from city manager, he's not here, excuse me, and council members. Anybody having reports, anything to bring up tonight? Okay. Want to commend, I think they're probably, I don't know the schedule, but the city staff has done an excellent job of maintaining the flags on Main Street for the month they've been out or a little over. Left them up to acknowledge all of the veterans banners that are up and today being Flag Day, it was the extension of it. So I think it's proven to be a very, very wonderful project that, that past Mayor Jim Norris and Mr. Crone and the American Legion folks have all worked on. I know it's been a lot of people working on it and I think it's a very fitting tribute for those people that have made the decision to serve our country and provide us protection they have. No reports?
No.
New business? Will stand adjourned as the Guyman City Council. Agenda item number three is discussion and possible action to approve the transfer of eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars from the two thousand fifteen A revenue note account balance to the Guyman wastewater treat, treatment plant maintenance account number sixty-five dash five dash seven five oh dash five six seven zero zero for the first purpose of upgrading the blower control panels, VFDs. There's proposals attached and this is to update some blowers in the plant. Anybody having questions? I think it's an upgrade to save some, make them more efficient and save some electricity, I believe.
Right.
Any discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer of the eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars from the two thousand fifteen A revenue note account balance to the Guyman wastewater treatment plant maintenance account sixty-five dash five dash seven fifty dash five six seven zero zero for the purpose of upgrading the blower control panels, the VHDs.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action on authorizing the removal of Renee Harland from the depository bank accounts for the city of Guyman, Guyman Utilities Authority, Guyman Industrial Authority and Guyman Airport Authority.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the removal of Renee Harland from the depository bank accounts for the city of Guyman, Guyman Utilities Authority, Guyman Industrial Authority and Guyman Airport Authority.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Okay. Any new business? Stand adjourned. We'll go to the airport authority. Agenda item number three is discussion and possible action on authorizing the removal of Renee Harland from the depository bank accounts for the city of Guyman, Guyman Utilities Authority, Guyman Industrial Authority and Guyman Airport Authority.
I'd like to make a motion, authorize the removal of Renee Harland from the depository bank accounts for the city of Guyman, Guyman Utilities Authority, Guyman Industrial Authority and Guyman Airport Authority.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Any new business? Will stand adjourned as the Guyman Airport Authority. Call a meeting, a special meeting, the Guyman Industrial Authority. Agenda item number three is discussion and possible action on authorizing the removal of Renee Harland from the depository bank accounts for the city of Guyman, Guyman Utilities Authority, Guyman Industrial Authority and Guyman Airport Authority.
Make a motion that we approve the action to authorize the removal of Renee Harland from the depository bank accounts of the city of Guyman, Guyman Utilities Authority, Guyman Industrial Authority and Guyman Airport Authority.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Any new business? Not, will stand adjourned. Thanks to everybody for coming out tonight. Thanks to everybody for coming out tonight.